Good evening. This is the Tuesday, September ninth, two thousand and twenty five, meeting of the Town of South Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission. Would all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So it's time to welcome our new alternate, Wayne Kilburn. Just been appointed by the Town Council. So glad to have you aboard. As you were noting, we worked together on the Zoning Board of Appeals many long years ago. Okay, um, so we're now going to have a public hearing. Oh, please, everybody silence your cell phones, and I will do the same. Okay, um, so the secretary, please read the notice.
Notice is hereby given that there will be a public hearing on Tuesday, September ninth, two thousand and twenty five, at seven PM in the council chambers of the South Windsor Town Hall to consider the following. Number one, application twenty-five dash thirty-three P. five-five-five Dart Hill Road LLC. This is a request for a zone change of four point one acres from rural residential to A thirty residential zone on property located at five fifty-five Dart Hill Road, corner of Dart Hill Road and Trumbull Lane. Application twenty-five dash thirty-eight P. Jones Mobile Food Vendor. This was a request for a two-year temporary and conditional permit for a mobile food vendor on property located at seven twenty-nine Ellington Road, RC Zone. This application has been withdrawn. Copies of the application are in file in the office of the Town Clerk and with the Planning Department and online at south windsor dash C T dot gov slash planning. At this hearing, interested persons may be heard and written comments by the public will be received by mail or email. Persons who may require an accommodation can contact staff at eight six zero six four four two five one one, extension two three two nine. Stephen Wagner, Chair, Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you. So the way we work this is we'll hear first from the applicant, whatever they have to present, then we'll hear from our town staff, in this case, Director of Planning, Michelle Leip. Then we ask for comments from the public, whether you're in favor or opposed, whatever. And finally, we'll let the commissioners ask questions and provide comments and then close the public hearing. This is a pretty short meeting tonight, so it's likely we'll be able to, depending on how the hearing goes, we may be able to close and actually act on this one tonight, which will happen later. So the applicant, come forward.
Good evening, Chairman Wagner. Members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, for your record, I'm Peter DiMali, President and CEO of Design Professionals, Inc., with offices in town at fifty-eight H. Connecticut Avenue. We've been retained by Mr. Jakes to provide a number of different services, including land surveying, which has already been completed, the base map for this project, as well as civil engineering, landscape architecture, and planning services. So we're representing John Jakes. Many of you have seen him before on the left side there, the second row in. He is a local resident. He's a home builder, and he's also a developer of longstanding in South Windsor. And after many decades, John was able to acquire five-five-five Dart Hill Road, which is a four point one acre parcel at the southwest corner of Dart Hill Road and Trumbull Lane in the Rural Residential Zoning District, which is the subject of this hearing tonight. Before I get started with my formal remarks, I'd just like to review what we just distributed to you, if I may, some of which may be a little bit redundant, depending what staff have provided to you. So the first thing is eight and a half by eleven. You should have that. Do you have those? No?
That there?
Yes, you do. Okay. And those are, this narrative statement, which came with the application package, first two sheets. Third sheet is page twenty-six, I believe, still page twenty-six, section two point two, four point three, affordable housing requirements, section A subdivision, which is from your zoning regulations, where you recently adopted a regulation pertaining to subdivisions addressing the affordable housing issue or crisis. And then the next two pages, or nineteen and twenty, those are from your subdivision regulations, where you also adopted some regulations entitled H. Inclusionary Zoning Requirements, which also address the affordable housing crisis in South Windsor. And it addresses, and I'll go through that, but it sets forth the policy you have. And we're the first one under this provision, as I understand, from Michelle Leip, your Director of Planning. So we will be getting, addressing that, however briefly as best we can, tonight, later in the presentation. Second thing you should have is this eleven by seventeen package, mostly in living color. There are ten handouts in that. The first one is a map portraying the existing zoning, which is what's depicted on the screen right now, a digital screen. The second one is, is the proposed zoning map depicting that, if this were, if you were so inclined to approve the subject parcel of five-five-five Dart Hill Road to change to the A thirty zone from the rural residential zone. The third map is an aerial orthophoto of the area. Fourth is Plan of Conservation Development Map, which is a sewer policies plan, which is the areas are allowed to be sewered in town, potentially. The fifth one is also from your Plan of Conservation Development, the Residential Densities Plan. And this is from, of course, your two thousand and twenty-four. You adopted the new Plan of Conservation Development. Those, both those maps are from that. Residential Densities Plan outlines your, your guide for, for future development and zoning. The sixth item is a conceptual lot layout that my staff and John worked on, which gives you an indication of what, what he has in, in mind for the property. Seventh, seventh sheet is from the Partridge Meadow Two subdivision. We're on Trumbull Lane. We're at the southwest corner of Dart Hill Road in Trumbull Lane, this parcel. And Trumbull Lane was a street built by Mr. Jakes and his family about thirty years ago. And that shows some of the plans for that, the detention and utilities that are in the street. So just so that you see that, that was from the approved subdivision plan from about thirty years ago. I think you approved in nineteen ninety-six. Number eight, in order, is our survey from our survey department, Larry Geiser and Barry Clark's department. Boundary and topographic survey already completed at Mr. Jakes's request. The ninth map is Planning and Zoning Commission cover sheet, the cover sheet from our plans from Partridge Meadow Two, which has the approval letters from twenty, nineteen, yeah, nineteen ninety-six, excuse me, nineteen ninety-six, about thirty years ago. And also, the tenth item is Zone Change Map from our application submission, which you probably already have, black and white version. So that's what's in that package as I go forward, in case I don't go smoothly with me changing these slides, the digital slides. Although, Quacey Cousins, project engineer for my staff, is here, in case I get stuck. Okay, so the subject property is moderately sloping from the southwest corner to, down to the northeast corner. That's the intersection of Dart Hill Road and Trumbull Lane, with no known wetlands or flood plain. There are three buildings on the site. There's a shed at the southwest corner, which was removed. There are two other buildings, the dilapidated shed in the center of it, and also an old house in northwest corner. And both of those will also be removed. And over many decades, the entire area has been rezoned by the Planning and Zoning Commission from rural residential to A thirty, with the exception of the subject four point one acre parcel, and also the parcel just to the left of it, as you see on the digital screen, the parcel just to the left, which is three, three acre parcel on Dart Hill, fronting on Dart Hill Road. And John, correct me if I'm wrong, you attempted to reach them and you've had no?
All times.
He's gone to the house. He's called whatever, whatever he could, and he's had no opportunity to speak with them at all. And as a consequence, we haven't been able to communicate with them and try to coordinate with them. If we had, we'd probably propose, if they were interested, that they become part of this zone change application, because it's the last little tiny piece in the RR zone, rural residential zone, in this whole area of town. And we'll get into why it's consistent with your planning. The area, maybe I'll go to the, hopefully I can get this up here. Let's see, zone change. Okay, well, this is the second one here. Should be the tab just to the right of that. Yeah, well, we'll just go to the aerial now. Okay, here we go. So the area is characterized by three large, single-family home subdivisions, all built by Mr. Jakes and other entities associated with the family. And John participated in the construction of those developments, their homes and their infrastructure, clean streets, utilities, et cetera. In fact, you have a drain layers permit, right? So he can actually legally install the pipes. All three required a zone change from this commission, from rural residential to A thirty. The first was Mountain View Estates. That is, if you can see on this exhibit, the site in the middle, to the north of that, it's the upper part of the map, that is Mountain View Estates. In fact, the open space that is right across from the lot. And that was the first, that was the first approved by this commission, followed by Partridge Meadow, which is the southeast corner of Avery Street and Dart Hill Road, which is just to the left of the, and yes, just to the left of the, or west of the site. And then, and then there's also nineteen ninety-six, nearly thirty years ago, Partridge Meadow Two, which included the construction of Trumbull Lane with public water, a public sewer, and stormwater drainage system, including a detention basin along the Vernon Town Line across from the subject property. So that includes Trumbull Lane, Madison Way, Stevens Road, Ellsworth Circle, and an extension of Pheasant Way from the first subdivision we mentioned, Partridge Meadow. I call it Partridge Meadow One. So the zone change for that was approved by the commission from rural residential to A thirty in nineteen ninety-five. Boy, it sounds old. We did that project. It sounds like a long time ago. I guess I must be aging. So we did, we did the, all the civil and survey and planning work for that property as well. And when John was building it, he asked us, when we were in design, he asked us, although we don't control it, we hope to someday acquire it, whether it's a beautiful property, southwest corner of Dart Hill Road in Trumbull Lane, and hopefully someday we'll acquire it, so design it. This is Trumbull Lane, all the utilities with, so that we have, that we have water laterals, public water laterals, sewer laterals. And the storm drainage is designed so it can accommodate all this flow coming off of that parcel, four point one acre parcel, that we're the subject of the meeting tonight. The frontage, and also, he wanted those, considering they'd be frontage lots, consistent with the A thirty zone, assuming that the commission would eventually approve it to A thirty. And A thirty, of course, is thirty thousand square foot lots and a hundred and twenty feet wide, rather than the hundred and seventy-five feet wide in the rural residential zone. And that's, of course, they, and they can accommodate, the hundred and twenty feet wide parcels can, can accommodate side load garages. It's very difficult to do a hundred-foot wide lot. I mean, you have to have really thin, thin, narrow and deep buildings. But on a hundred and twenty-foot wide lot, it's pretty characteristic that we can do a side load garage, if that's a preference of the homeowner. Of note, and if you look at the aerial, the area to the right of the site is first Trumbull Lane, and then the development on the east side of Trumbull Lane, part of Partridge Meadow Two, plus the former, I don't know if it's Gerber residence now or formerly, it's the northeast corner, southeast corner of that intersection. But to the right of that, there's a huge development of about a hundred and fifty, fifty-five plus, it's active adult retirement communities called Quail Hollow. We were not involved with that project. However, that is right there, and that's a sizable development just to the east of this subject area. So it has something to do with the character of the neighborhood. Okay, so in the Planning and Zoning Commission's recently adopted Plan of Conservation Development, it contains two maps pertinent to the zone change proposal. I allude to those in the introductory remarks. The first one is the Sewer Policies Plan, adopted by the Water Pollution Control Authority, which shows the subject parcel and the entire surrounding area as falling in what's called the primary sewer service area, meaning it is eligible for utilizing sanitary sewers in the area, including that installed by John Jakes decades ago in Trumbull Lane. And the second map pertinent to that is the Residential Densities Plan from your Plan of Conservation Development, which indicates the subject property should be developed as low-density residential, which is defined as one and two residences per acre in your new P O C D. Thank you, Quacey. Okay, here it is. So if you look at that, the areas in yellow are the areas that are the low-density residential and one to two lots. And as you can see, the entire area around there, the light green, by the way, is open space within it, but the entire area around there is designated for that in your Plan of Conservation Development. So one to two homes per acre. And, and the three subdivisions I just mentioned that the Jakes family were involved with, across the street, across Dart Hill Road, which is Mountain View Estates, to the west of us is Partridge Meadow, the original Partridge Meadow subdivision, southeast corner of Dart Hill and Avery. And then to the south of this parcel and to the east of it is the Trumbull Lane neighborhood called Partridge Meadow Two. All three of those are in the yellow classification, and they're all three have been changed by the commission to A thirty zone by virtue of a zone change application. So I think we're going to go to the concept right now, which is the sixth map in your package, if we could see that. Yeah, the concept, oh, no, pardon me. That's the one we didn't get in in time for digitally, so we're going to put this up on the board. You have it in your package, the sixth item? Yes. Four, depicts four lots. So, so John's proposal is to subdivide the property into four new building lots, three of them fronting on Trumbull Lane, which is here on the east side of it, right side. Two will be conventional lots. Those are the ones southerly most, farthest away from Dart Hill Road, which is same as all the other lots in Partridge Meadow Two. And then the corner lot, we like to oversize the corner lot. John does as well, give more, because you have two front yards. So that one will be about an acre in size. So they'll be larger, more frontage and greater size. And then, and all three of those will have driveways onto Trumbull Lane, not onto Dart Hill Road. And then the remaining lot, the fourth one in the back here, along, fronting on Dart Hill Road, which includes the area of the older residents, and will have double the lot size of the A thirty zone, and about a hundred and sixty-five feet of frontage on Dart Hill Road as we, this evolves, this plan. Although Home now has two driveway curb cuts on Dart Hill Road, that's in this area and here, in, in pursuant to principles of access management this commission has adopted in staff, we're proposing only one, one driveway curb cut onto Dart Hill Road will be proposed in the, in a future subdivision application, if you choose to approve this zone change application. John has reached out to abutters and neighbors on, in the Partridge Meadow Two neighborhood. And often, those people who are there are original neighbors, original homeowners who bought from the family, his family, about thirty years, twenty-five to thirty years ago. They, in many instances, remember John distinctly. He's been part of the process when they, their homes and development, and the subdivision was developed. And they appeared interested, a number of them, in John completing the neighborhood, the development with similar quality homes. We have, we have letters of support, which I'll, if you'd like, I can read them at the conclusion. Both of them are pretty short. I'll bring them up there. Okay. We'll, we'll submit those at the end of my formal presentation. And there were six or seven of them. And, and note that all homes that John's proposing will be custom designed, as he'll be doing of late, all of his homes. And, and, and they'll be, he'll be working closely with the homeowner to design a home to meet their desires and their interests and their needs. So also, in the handout, the eight and a half by eleven, I gave you the two regulations for your edification that you adopted back in two thousand and twenty-three. In March of two thousand and twenty-three, you adopted amendments to zoning and subdivision regulations. Zoning was two point two, four point three, uppercase A. And in the subdivision regulations, it was chapter three, section H, item, yeah, I, I, section H. Those addressed housing affordability and inclusionary zoning. And those provisions therein only apply to a subdivision, and this being the first one you've seen to date, as Michelle indicates to me, a subdivision of three or more lots. And is, the amendments require a fee in lieu of building units, because it would be next to impossible to ask somebody to build single-family subdivision and have within that development units. So the commission decided, concluded it's best to have a fee in lieu of constructing houses for each lot to be deposited in a new housing trust fund established by the council or by the Planning and Zoning Commission, by the Planning and Zoning Commission, for the purposes of planning, subdividing, acquiring, developing, or managing affordable housing units in South Windsor, again, addressing the affordable housing crisis in this community. That was what the commission, after much depth and many months of review, concluded would be appropriate. So we're the first ones. So if, Michelle indicated to me before the meeting, that today, based on the formulas in the subdivision regulation, Bart, two pages from subdivision pages nineteen and twenty, it would be about fifty thousand dollars total for the four lots that Mr. Jakes would be required to submit. And I believe it's at the time you file the MyLars. Is there an update to that?
Actually, it's set up similar to how we do a fee in lieu of open space. So it could be either done in one lump sum, or it could be at the closing of each lot. So it'll be something put on the land records indicating a due.
He'd prefer that if, if it's commission's discretion. So in, in summary, the requested zone change from rural residential to A thirty zone change, A thirty residential, the A thirty zone, which is a ten thousand square foot reduction in lot size, would allow a net gain of one building lot. And it's consistent with the goals, objections, and recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Commission's newly adopted Plan of Conservation Development, as I've just outlined to you, is supported by available public sanitary sewer, public water, and storm drainage utilities, previously installed by the applicant in Trumbull Lane, has physical land properties suitable for development due to soils Has physical land properties suitable for development due to soils, land and other characteristics. Is supported by the commission's prior zoning changes and development patterns and approvals in the immediate vicinity, as I've discussed. Is consistent with the principles of access management by reducing the Dart Hill Road driveways from two down to one, is in, one curb cut. Is in keeping with the general character and zoning of the neighborhood, including lot sizes. Does not require the construction or maintenance of any new public streets. Will have no adverse impact on surrounding property values. Is too small of a development to generate any traffic impacts and will require the four lot subdivision that participates in the planning zone commission's affordable housing program via payment by the applicant to the town's housing trust account, as we just described. So I will hand to you the letters of support that we've received. It's a really friendly crowd here, by the way. Oh, you have them. Okay. Oh, okay. Great. Okay, I already have them. That's great. Oh, so she's got the one that you were getting. So you'll make a comment to that fact? Okay, thank you. So that concludes our formal presentation. We tried to make it as brief as possible, so I wouldn't get the sign from Mr. Foley. So we're, we're available for, I'm, I'm available. John is available for any questions you may have. I know we look forward to the remarks from Michelle, your director of planning, Michelle Light, but that's all the formal presentation we have.
I'm sure we'll get to that a little bit later. So now our director of planning, Michelle Light.
Thank you. I'll just read a little bit of my report that I submitted to the commission. This is a request for zone change of one point four acres from rural residential to A thirty residential zoning for five 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 Dart Hill Road. It's a southwesterly corner of Dart Hill in Trumbull Lane. Property currently has an existing single family home with two accessory structures. Under current zoning, it could support three single family house lots. Our, our zoning is a hundred and seventy-five feet of frontage, forty thousand square foot minimum lot size. Current zoning around this property is indicated by Mr. DeMalle primarily A thirty zoning to the north, the south, the east. There is one small lot to the west that's currently still residentially zoned. But again, the remainder there is A thirty zoning. With an A thirty rezoning, it would support lots of thirty thousand square feet with a hundred and twenty feet of frontage, a hundred and fifty feet of depth. So in this situation, you could get four lots, as was depicted in the, the plan Peter presented. As many of you may know, if you've traveled on Dart Hill, it's currently under reconstruction as we speak. Sidewalks are being added to the roadway. I believe in this general area, they are opposite this property, but we would want be any consideration for driveway connections if necessary. And the applicant has indicated they would reduce the number curb cuts on Dart Hill to one, eliminating one existing curb cut out there. The other lots would be access from Trumbull. Section eight point three of your zoning regulations lists a variety of considerations when you're looking at a zone change. You're considering your plan of conservation development. You're looking at the changes in the pattern of development of land use in the area and the surrounding town. You're looking at the supply of land available in this zone or other residential zones, the suitability of the land, impact of the utilities. This is available water and sewer are available to this property. General character of the neighborhood. You're looking at the impact on the surrounding area, traffic congestion. You're considering impact on surrounding property values, the environmental impacts, health and welfare, Jennifer, the general health and welfare of the community, neighborhood acceptance and the protection of historic factors. As indicated, the plan of conservation development, which is up there, adopted in twenty twenty-four, does support one to two units per acre densities in this general area. There is no open space requirement when you have a subdivision of under six lots. But how this will fall into our new affordable housing requirement, once you're creating three or more lots. So as indicated by Mr. DeMalle, there's a formula in your subdivision regulations that would be applied at the time of a subdivision application. If this were to come in today, it comes out to roughly about a fifty-one thousand dollar affordable housing fee. That developer would have the choice of paying it as one lump sum or dividing it by the number of lots and paying it at the time of certificate of occupancies. Again, this is modeled after our fee in lieu of open space, and that is how we collect that fee. Just for the commission's edification, we chose to go this route because with subdivision, it's very difficult to get lots, affordable lots, under a subdivision approval. And knowing our community, we really had the feeling that we'd be seeing more multifamily developments and affordability was easier sought through multifamily developments. However, we wanted to have some subdivision regulation that would address the affordability requirement. The housing trust fund that has been created is something that, for those that remember, we adopted Affordable Housing Plan. That was a recommendation that a housing trust fund be created. We now have a housing fair rent and housing committee that has a trust fund is under their guise as something that they would make recommendations on how that money would eventually be spent. So we have zero in it right now. But this would be, again, the start of building a housing trust fund for affordable housing projects or ideas into the future. The last thing I just want to comment is we did notify CROG. This is a zone change within five hundred feet of the surrounding town. They did submit a finding of no apparent regional plans and policies or concerns of neighboring towns. As this application approved, the, the commission shall state on the record that the zone change has been found consistent with the plan of conservation and development. The planning department has no additional comments. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we'll hear members of the public. Mr. DeMalle, you could have a seat.
Glad to.
And if you do wish to speak, come up, sign in, identify yourself verbally, and then we'll hear your comments.
Do the sign in here first. Pen, red, and ink. That's all right.
So Matthew Bursey, sixty-three Trumbull Lane. And I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the, of the application. I'd like the, the board to, to review it and, and improve it. I live at sixty-three Trumbull Lane, so from my front yard, I can see diagonally straight over, I think, you know, the, the value, the, the beauty and, and the impression that, that would give for, for, you know, new houses. We got, we got a great neighborhood. You know, Joe Caruso, rest his soul when he was alive. We would always talk about, you know, having homes built on that particular lot. And, you know, Mike had, had built my home. I've been in thirty-nine years in South Windsor. Twenty-five year resident on, on Trumbull Lane. And, and we got a great neighborhood, and we very much would look forward to it. Mike and Vicky Pelletier, who are right next door, tonight, when I got home, my wife's traveling. And Vicky came over with some corn soup from some corn we grow on a property here in South Windsor. And so, you know, we, we got a great neighborhood and, you know, we look forward to having, you know, four new families and, and homes to, to share that. We get together all the time, you know, Christmas, New Year's on the, the block. And, you know, I would just, you know, be in support and ask you to consider, you know, favorable approval of the zoning change in the application. So I don't know if there's any questions, but it's a great opportunity to come here and talk before the board. And I can say that, you know, over the years, all the neighbors that I've talked to, you know, we've all looked forward to this. We knew it would come one day. Unfortunately, Joe has passed away, but we, we hope that that wish comes true. Thank you.
So if we have questions, we'll ask them when it's the commissioners' turn to speak. So, thank you.
We're all set?
You're all set for now.
I think I have enough here, too.
Anybody else?
We have to sign in here?
Sign in, please, and pull the microphone down closer to your face.
So hi, my name's Karen Caruso Martaggio. I'm here with my sister Donna Rose. My father was Joseph Caruso. He lived at five 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 Dart Hill Road. He lived there for sixty years. And I submitted a letter to you all. You should have it. It was my father's wish that, he died in January, but he talked with John over the years about the land and, and what John's plans were on the land. He had told us, both my, me and my sister, what he had hoped would happen to land when he passed away. He had wanted us to sell it to John. He was very clear about that. And he wanted it, him to develop the four houses on it. He wanted him to develop the land. He loved his work. He saw what he did to the, to the back and his other, his other houses that he built and, you know, he respected him. And this is what he wanted to happen to his land. He loved it. And that's what he told us to do, and that's the first thing we did. So we really hope that we can see this happen. So anything you want to add to it?
Just as the oldest daughter, I just echo her.
If you don't mind, just only speak at the microphone.
So as the oldest daughter to the youngest daughter.
I'm sorry, even though I know you're just encouraging, if you would announce your name and sign in, please.
I'm just going to echo my sister's sentiments and just say that we have known John for over thirty years. We respect his integrity, his craft as a builder. And my father is especially pleased with his landscaping, that he adds on to each of his home. There's the country charm that he, you know, wanted for this lot to continue. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry for the loss of your father so recently. Anybody else wish to speak?
Hello, my name is Cheryl Sylvester. I'm a resident of twenty Madison Way. My backyard directly backs up to five 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 Dart Hill Road. My husband and I were, I think, the first house built in Partridge Meadows Two. And even back then, Mr. Caruso was so nice. He came over and built trees to barricade our two yards. And back then, we all knew that he really wanted to someday sell these lots to John. So we've always expected that. I've known John for over forty years, or forty years. I don't want to make us too old. But we, I don't know if you've ever looked at Vintage Lane or his neighborhood he built or any of the other developments in town. But if you have, you know the type of quality builder he is, which is why I think so many in our neighborhood are confident in this going up. I think it can only add value to our houses, our neighborhood. You know, both value and aesthetically to Dart Hill Road. I've talked to a number of our neighbors, some of which couldn't be here tonight. And as someone said, my neighbors, from me going up the hill, five houses and across the street, two, have been there twenty-five, thirty years. And they're all in favor of this. So I just wanted to come in, speak on John's behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. I think everybody has spoken who's in the audience. Anybody else? Seeing none. We have some letters to read? Would you like to read them?
I'll start with Karen Caruso. Should I read your letter, Karen, or? Okay. So this is from Karen. I'm writing in support for the approval of the zone change and subdivision approval for the proposed houses at five fifty-five Dart Hill Road. My family previously owned the property for over sixty years. My father, Joe Caruso, had many discussions over the years with Jean Jacques about developing the property. It was his wish, when he passed, to sell the property to John to build new homes. With four houses being built on the property, we are confident John will respect the integrity of the land and build beautiful homes as he has in the past in the town of South Windsor. Sincerely, Karen Caruso. We have another one from Tim and Deborah Alter. They're at thirty Madison Way. To the commission, we write this letter in support of the proposed four homes to be built on five fifty-five Dart Hill Road. We don't feel that the addition of the homes will adversely affect our neighborhood. Then there's one from Craig Wormnest, who's president of Twin Manufacturing Company. Dear members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, as president of Twin Manufacturing Company and a resident of South Windsor, I'm writing in support of the A thirty zone change application submitted by Jean Jacques and five 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 Dart Hill Road LLC for the proposed residential subdivision at the corner of Dart Hill and Trumbull Lane. Jean Jacques and his family have been an excellent neighbor. They consistently take great care of the adjoining property they own and manage. And they have a proven track record of quality work and responsible development. I've observed the high standards they bring to their properties and the professionalism with which they operate. Fine examples are the Vintage Hills subdivision and another is the Partridge Meadow Two subdivision adjacent to the subject site. I'm confident that this subdivision will be carried out with the same level of care and commitment to excellence that Jean Jacques is known for. His firm is a strong asset of the South Windsor community. I respectfully encourage the commission to look favorably upon their request. Again, sincerely, Craig Wormnest. And the last one before Deswina takes over is from Stephen Chernick. He's at twelve Ellsworth Circle. I am in favor of the change of zone at five fifty-five Dart Hill Road, South Windsor, from three houses to four houses that will be built by Jean Jacques from Jacques Construction LLC. I do understand that three of the homes will be on Trumbull Lane. Best regards, Stephen Chernick.
Okay, great.
Cheryl, do you want me to read your letter?
It's up to you. I kind of said it all up.
Okay. I write this letter in support of the proposed four homes to be built on five 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 Dart Hill Road. I don't feel that the addition of the four homes will adversely affect our neighborhood and feel it will positively affect my property value and those of our neighbors. My house was the first house built on our neighbor, in our neighborhood and always anticipated the four plus acre property at five 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 Dart Hill Road would be subdivided at some point. Another email from Michael and Vicky Rose Pelletier. Michael and Vicky Rose Pelletier support the zoning change for five 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 Dart Hill Road, South Windsor, Connecticut. Mr. Caruso made us aware of the intention to subdivide that area before his passing. We feel comfortable that the property lines are accurate and the types of homes planned will add value to the neighborhood. Another email from Matthew Bursey and Leslie Mulphy. Dear Planning and Zoning, my wife and I are writing in support of the application at five 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 Dart Hill Road. We appreciate your favorable approval of the application and zoning change. Please reach out to us if you have any questions. We believe that the four new homes will add value, beauty, and provide the positive impression, which is consistent with our community.
Thank you. So we're going to have comments from the commissioners. Since you're a new alternate, I'll explain how alternates work. During a public hearing, you're like any other member of the public, so you can speak, and I'll call on you in turn. When we actually are deliberating on, you know, to take a vote on the application, then only alternates who are seated will only alternates who are seated will be allowed to speak at that time. But during this part of the hearing, you're allowed to speak just like everybody else. So, with that, I'll start with Commissioner Koarshi.
I have no comments or questions.
Commissioner Viteri?
I have no further comments.
Commissioner Bernstein?
Peter, one quick question. So, I, this may require you to repeat something you said earlier, but the acoustics in here continue to be challenging. I went to take a look at the site today. So, as I'm driving down Trumbull, to the east, is any part of that, part of this site? Or does the site stop at Trumbull?
It stopped at Trumbull.
Okay.
So, if you're entering Trumbull Lane from Dart Hill Road, it's on the right side.
All right. So, anything to the east is part of one of the existing developments that you spoke?
The exception, I think, of the house, when you first go in the corner lot, the other opposite side, on Vernon's side, I don't, I think that was separate from the subdivision.
Okay.
I think it was pre-existing lot, if I recall correctly. Yeah, the Gerber's house, right?
Michelle, I'm just wondering how the Housing Trust Fund helps us with affordable housing and the only thing I can come up with is that the money ultimately will be used to subsidize a buyer who qualifies for affordable housing?
It could work with our housing authority, maybe doing some planning money for some, you know, some, if we ever do anything on a housing property, a town property, to get some studies done or some engineering done, things like that. Again, you know, it's going to start small, but if you get fifty thousand dollars in one application and you get maybe another fifty thousand dollars in another application, it will build up over time. So, again, there's other communities that do different things with it. They do have, some communities do where someone make an application and they deed restrict a property, for example. And there's some money used for some preparing deeds and things like that. So, we're really at the initial stages of investigating what you could do with it.
Okay.
But what immediately comes to my mind is something that might support our housing authorities' efforts to try to create more housing for town folks.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if it could be used to, let's say, buy down a mortgage to get someone?
I think those kinds of things are certainly things that could be thought of.
Just curious.
Yep.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Foley?
Question for John. I've nothing.
We're going to make you sign in and all that now.
I think we know who John is.
Name is John Jakes.
Nothing but respect for John and his quality of craftsmanship. And Joe Caruso, when I got started in business, I knew your dad, he was very good to me, taught me a lot. When you purchase this land and it's RR Zone, you could make this go with three lots?
Well, the whole intention was obviously to get four lots. I always thought we would have three on Trumbull and, you know, that was our hope.
And don't take any offense, but I look at the mistakes that are made in this town since nineteen ninety-five, right? That's just how I look at it. Like, we just continue to move the goalposts. We keep, continue to change the, every, there's never an applicant that comes up here that says, "I just want to follow the rules that we have."
Right.
So, you can still make it go with three.
I guess I would have to.
I mean, I just look at it, because Dave Stevens, although you couldn't get in touch with Dave, if it's his turn, then who knows? They may change, they're going to come in for the same thing. And I'm looking at our school system, our human resources and everything else that's going on in the community. And I know that land. I used to go there and buy materials there. It's beautiful, to me, it's, it was a great nursery and great farmland. To me, I'd rather see larger tracts of land with less density. And again, nothing but respect for you, nothing but respect for your dad, but that's just, if you can make it go with three, that's how I look at it.
We're just trying to continue what's there in the development.
And again, I look at it like the mistakes made by the forefathers, that's what happened to this town. That's why this town isn't what it used to be, because we just kept making changes to accommodate developers. And so, that's just, that's just me. But again, nothing but respect for you and your business and the quality of your craftsmanship and for your father, so.
Commissioner Dexter?
I have a question for Michelle, or maybe John and Michelle. Is the home that is currently there going to be demolished?
Yes.
And so, it is a demolition delay thing, or is that not appropriate?
If it's over seventy-five years old, it would invoke demolition delay. I don't know the age, my guess is it probably is.
Nineteen thirty is what I read. So, that would be ninety-five years old.
Yeah, so then, so then it would.
It would go.
It would go through and whether or not a delay get invoked, obviously, the process would decide that.
Okay, okay, just long as nobody takes it down before they realize that. Okay. That was my only real question. I think whether it's three or four homes, they're going to be beautiful and the neighborhood's going to be very happy. So, that's all I'll say for now.
Commissioner Boganski?
No comments at this time.
Commissioner Capchunas?
Just a question, I guess, from Michelle. So, we wouldn't be changing the zone to A-30 on the other lot that's adjoining it, that would still maintain rural residential, right?
That's correct. It would still be rural residential, yeah.
I like the idea of larger lots and keeping a little rural residential going on it, but hear what everybody else has to say on it.
Commissioner Kilburn?
Thank you all for welcoming me. I've known Peter for fourteen years, was zoning board of appeals. He's always very thorough, very detailed and very organized in his presentations. Nice job, Peter. Thank you.
So, this also involves a subdivision, but this application is strictly for the zone change. So, are they going to have to come in with a subdivision?
That's correct.
Okay. And we're pretty close to Vernon, did we have to contact them?
At the time of subdivision application, we'll notify Vernon, yes.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Anybody else? Anything else? Any reason to keep the public hearing open? This time, we'll close the public hearing at eight, at seven fifty-two. So, as was mentioned before, application twenty-five thirty-eight P has been withdrawn. So, now we'll proceed to our regular meeting. I'm going to seat Commissioner Koarshi for Commissioner Cavanero. And we'll now take up the minutes. Any comments on the minutes?
I think we just caught one minor error on page nine. Third full paragraph, the third line down, Chairman Wagner did point out that that should say emergency access is also necessary.
Okay. With consensus, we'll approve the minutes. Now, we have time for public participation for any item that is not on the agenda. Anybody who'd like to comment on an item that's not on the agenda. As hearing, I'm seeing none. We'll move on to new business. Application twenty-five thirty-nine P, South Windsor Entertainment TNC renewal. This is a request for renewal of a two-year temporary conditional permit to operate a haunted walk known as Nightmare Acres at Nomad's Outdoor Aerial Park, property located at two forty Governor's Highway, I Zone.
I don't see an applicant here tonight. I'm not sure why. I know they came and picked up their sign. I'd be happy to do my report. It's a renewal of what's been ongoing out there, nothing's really changing, but it's up to you.
I think that would be good.
Go ahead, okay. So, this is request for a two-year temporary conditional permit renewal to operate a haunted walk known as Nightmare Acres at Nomad's Outdoor Aerial Park, on property located two forty Governor's Highway in the industrial zone. This will be the ninth season of this. The event takes place over fifteen evenings, running from October third to November second, with hours from seven PM to ten PM. Parking for the event is onsite with overflow parking on the property across the street at one ninety-five Governor's Highway. Portable lighting, other security measures such as a parking attendant will be provided as and in the past. The applicant has indicated that they may serve alcohol this year. If alcohol is served, the vendor will have to have the appropriate permits per the state requirements. And this is usually, it does require coordination with both the police department and the health department for the event. The temporary conditional wording is that temporary conditional permits may be granted by the commission for a period not to exceed two years. Such approval may be given after a public hearing if, for the judgment of the commission, public convenience and welfare will substantially serve, inappropriate use of neighboring property will not be substantially or permanently injured, traffic and other hazards will not result from such use. I just would make a note that we do have an outstanding landscaping bond on this property that we've been trying to get the applicant to take care of. So, we would request that before we renew this again, that the applicant take care of the minor landscaping improvements that were requested with the two thousand thirteen approval, I would add. We're still holding a bond. Other than that, the county has no additional requirements and this has been a very successful event every year, so we certainly support this application.
Okay, so, any comments or questions from commissioners? So, you're feeling that this is straightforward? Okay. Someone would like to make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve. Application twenty-five thirty-nine P, South Windsor Entertainment, terms and condition renewal. I don't have the approval sheet.
Okay, there you go.
So, just for Commissioner Kilburn's advocacy, usually on the back of Michelle's comments, she'll have the motion that we need. So, what he's going to do is read what she recommended as our motion.
I got it. The two-year temporary and conditional permit for the haunted walk will expire September nine twenty-seven. Number two, adequate nighttime lighting shall be added to ensure patron safety. When off-site parking is being utilized, security personnel must be present to cross patrons. This crossing location on Governor's Highway must be coordinated with the traffic division within the police services. Three, if there are building structures, signs or other items that require a building permit or other town approvals, permits, all such approvals or permits must be obtained prior to construction or use of the site. And four, a food permit is required from the health department for the sale of beer and wine.
Second?
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any standing? Passes unanimously. And we'll move on to, all right, oh, I forgot the agenda. Application twenty-five thirty-eight P, Jones Mobile Food Vendor. Oh, that's one that's been withdrawn. So, we're now ready to move on to the application we just had a public hearing on. Again, the alternates are not seated, don't participate in this part of the discussion. So, any comments or further discussion that we didn't have in that public hearing? Do we have a motion? Somewhere?
So, I do have a comment or two, if I may. So, normally, I'm not in favor of changing zones, because zones were established in the first place for a good reason. But as I look at this, I think I would make an exception. All the areas around it are A-30. And as I looked at the site today, frankly, other than building residences, I don't really see any other good use for the site. So, I am in favor of it.
Any other comments? In which case, we'll take a vote. All in favor? Oh, did you have a comment? Oh, we didn't have a motion, I'm sorry.
I'll read it, okay? Guys, yeah. Application twenty-five dash thirty-three P, this would be a motion to approve 555 Dart Hill Road zone change. Zone change of four point one acres from RR Residential Zone to A-30 Residential Zone for property located at 555 Dart Hill Road. The Planning and Zoning Commission finds that the zone change is in conformance with the town plan of conservation and development. Number two, within ninety days, a zone change map at a scale of one inch equals forty feet with an A-dash-two certification shall be filed on the land records showing all boundary lines and the acreage of the land where the zone change was granted. The map shall be drawn in accordance with the rules and regulations of the State Board of Registration for professional engineers and land surveyors and shall be stamped and signed by a licensed land surveyor. The zone change map shall be submitted on black and white MyLars with this approval letter thereon, together with two paper copies and one digital copy of the zone change map. And three, the effective date of this zone change shall coincide with the filing of the MyLars.
I second.
Okay. And now, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
So, we'll call the roll, please.
Okay, Commissioner Kurishi?
Yes.
Commissioner Viteri? Commissioner Bernstein? Commissioner Foley?
No.
Commissioner Dexter?
Nay.
Commissioner Boganski?
No.
Chair Ratner?
Yes.
Four ayes, three noes.
Okay, the motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to application twenty-three twenty-nine P, Thomas South Windsor Emergency Communication Tower, change order request to change the final tower location, a property located at one twenty-four Sullivan Avenue, RC Zone.
So, I am actually just brought this forward on behalf of the fire marshal, Walter Summers. They're getting ready to finalize the lease area and they're finding, they're finding that it works best to push the tower about twenty feet further to the north based on pavement that's currently out there, so they don't have to dig up a further area. Because this was approved by special exception site plan, I wanted at least the commission to be aware of the change order request. It doesn't impact, I mean, it works fine on the property, but again, it was part of a special exception request, so we didn't want you to be aware of it. We have provided you a map that shows you where they like to go, where it was approved, again, was twenty feet south of that, the location of the tower.
Any questions or comments from? In which case, we'll take a vote. All in favor? Oh, we need a motion, I guess, right?
If you're good with it, by consensus, I can let him know that we're good with it. Okay. Thank you.
All right, we're good with it by consensus. Okay. Do we have any bonds?
No bonds.
Any old business?
Just a couple really quick things I just want to make you aware of. We had a request for someone to take over the building at four ninety-one Buckland Road. It used to be called an imaging place over there, right on Buckland Road, right behind the bank. It's going to be a mathematic tutoring operation, they're taking over about five thousand square feet, but it's a pretty significant number of students that they'd like to have there. So, I did review it with our town engineer, Tori Sidoti, the traffic pattern and the proposal. And we, it's a permitted use as of right, but we are going to direct them to do some wayfinding signage within the parking lot to make sure that the drop-off is clear. So, I just wanted to make the commission aware of this. It doesn't require a new site plan, the site plan exists, they're not making any changes, but it will be occupying four ninety-one Buckland Road, assuming they move forward with their project. So, again, because of the number of vehicles that was proposed to a number of students, but they're more off-hours, they're more in the late afternoon and evening hours, and then on the weekends, they're not during our commuting hours. So, the parking lot does appear to accommodate the traffic flow. So, I just want to make you aware of it if you see a new business going in there. Secondly, the Red Heat Tavern has submitted a proposal, they are doing a facade change. I do have a copy of the facade, if anybody's interested in taking a look at it. Little change from what they had down there. They're doing a lot of freshing up and a lot of buildings done in Evergreen Walk, so you'll see some of that going on. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention your training. We've been sending you some information on training. If anybody needs to know where they are as far as what hours they've accomplished or what hours they need to accomplish, Josh does have all that put together and we can advise you on any opportunities that there might have been in the past or in the future for you to take advantage of, getting the hours you need. And then just lastly, on your upcoming meeting, September thirtieth is the agenda date, because the twenty-third is a holiday, Jewish holiday, so you're meeting on September thirtieth. We are looking to schedule an executive session that night. We are looking to schedule an executive session that night. The town attorney would like to do it, if everybody's available, we'd like to do it at 6:30, prior to the seven o'clock meeting. This would be to take up the matter of Talbot Lane, to finalize the approval related to the stipulated agreement on that project. So if people are comfortable with 6:30, we'll schedule executive session for 6:30, and that will be an agenda item on that night for the commission to act on.
Can we make that work, everybody? I guess so, yes.
Okay. That's all I have for you at this time.
I have an item, a quick one, from Michelle. So we had an informal discussion about applications that are two-year temporary and conditional permits being handled at the staff level. So like tonight, there's two of those on our agenda. Are we anywhere further with that?
Yeah, we've sent that out to CROG as a text amendment, and it should be coming up. Originally, we were just going to schedule it for public hearing on September 30th, but looking how your agenda's shaking out, we might do that on October 14th, because we only have one other item on the 14th, which is another text amendment. So we'll probably have that coming up in October. It's a public hearing item.
But would that, would that only be for TNCs that have already been active and approved? Like, if it's a brand-new one?
Brand-new one, you would hear it.
Okay.
Yes. And quite frankly, you would know when it came in for renewal, and you could have the discretion to say, "Hey, we want to hear this again." We wouldn't do it without your knowledge.
Okay, any other old business? Anybody else have anything they'd like to talk about yet?
I just have a question, because someone asked me about the pizza place down the quad on Buckland.
That is, my understanding is it's probably after the first of the year. I think there was some, the ovens that had to be ordered, had quite a lead time on them, is what my understanding was. This was from a couple months ago. I'll try to get an update, but it was still a ways off.
So it's still coming?
Oh, yes, definitely still coming, yeah.
Yeah, what was the thing you were talking about earlier in Evergreen Walk? I didn't quite understand that.
Not in Evergreen Walk. No, 491-1 Buckland, which is a building right on Buckland Road, right near the town center area?
No, before that.
Red Heat?
Red Heat. The Red Heat Tavern is doing a facade change. They're getting rid of all their awnings, and they've got a whole design for the top of it. So you'll see some changes down there.
All right. Any other reason?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.